Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. We do welcome and appreciate your presence at this meeting of the GRPS Board of Education. We respectfully request that you turn off your cellular phones and refrain from clapping, cheering, or making any audible comments during the proceedings. We do invite you to make formal public comment during the designated times on either agenda items or non-agenda items. If you wish, you can do both. To do so, please fill out the comment card that you found at the table as you entered, and limit your comments to approximately three minutes, and then we'll call you at the appropriate time. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Mrs. Williams.
President.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Grant, present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Mathias.
Present.
Ms. Shaqy.
Here.
President Ross.
Present.
And can I get a motion to approve the night's agenda?
Motion for approval?
Support.
And we will start our evening with celebrations.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple celebrations. Sherwood Park Global Studies Academy has a unique opportunity. Ms. Sherry Ross, Principal of Sheridan Park Global Studies Academy, is not here this evening, but she does have members of her team to talk about the puzzle donation and what that means for our IB program. So if I can invite up Mr. Matthew Beresford and Ms. Lee, the IB Coordinator, to explain.
Good evening, Superintendent Robey, President Ross, and members of the board. I'm delighted this evening to bring forth this celebration. I've got the Bauma family here, along with Susan Lee, our PYP Coordinator, to tell you more, and we even have a small slideshow.
Thank you, Mr. President Ross, Dr. Robey, and distinguished members of the board for having us. I'd like to introduce Jill Bauma, along with Raj Bauma, and they have made a great contribution to Sherwood Park, as you can see in our PowerPoint. We have a 42,000-piece puzzle donation that Jill has created for us. We have a few words from our principal, Mrs. Ross.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Sherry Ross, and I am the Principal of Sherwood Park Global Studies Academy. I would like to thank Ms. Jill and the entire Bauma family for your generous donation of the 42,000-piece puzzle. That puzzle is truly a work of art, and it is the perfect complement to our global studies theme and our international baccalaureate curriculum framework. Again, thank you for your generosity and for partnering with us.
And this is the puzzle up close, so you can get a better feeling for all the landmarks, places, animals that are located on the puzzle.
Is it 200 and something? 200 and something, is there?
Yeah.
We'd like to thank Ms. Bauma for her contribution of the puzzle. It links both to our global studies theme, as well as to our primary years program that we're offering here at Sherwood. Students have already gone to the puzzle and found different landmarks, as well as animals or locations that are listed, and they've used those to then further research. So it's really become a focus point of interest to our students, and we look forward to using it in the future for our teaching and learning.
And we were able to welcome Ms. Jill, and the students were able to present her with a book that she brought of thank-you notes. And the other photo is a photo of our students in fourth grade viewing the puzzle and using it for some research, making connections.
Thank you, Ms. Jill.
Would you like to ask any questions, some family?
I did want to ask where she got those cool puzzle pants from.
Yeah.
No, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Did you put the puzzle together? Who put the puzzle together?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay. Awesome.
Every piece.
How long? Yeah, how long did it take?
How long did it take? A year.
Wow.
Wow.
How many pieces were there?
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand.
Oh, wow.
This was the fourth one that she's done. She's done one more that's even bigger than this one already, so.
Wow.
Where do you get these from?
I get them from Amazon.
Where else do you get these?
I get dimensions.
This is 23 feet by five and a half feet, I think.
Something like that, yeah.
It comes in sections, so she does each section at a time. And then I put glue on top of it, flip it over, put contact paper on the back of it, and then we glue it to the foam board, piece it all together on the floor at the school. And when it's all together, more glue on top of it, and your maintenance crew, a shout-out to them, they came, did a fantastic job of mounting it for us, and there it is. And so it was great.
Great.
We live right in the neighborhood, very close by, so we see the school all the time. We are a Christian school family, but we love the public schools, we support them, and we're just delighted to be able to share this with you folks as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
What inspired you to do that particular puzzle?
I've always been fond of puzzles, and then I saw a big one, a 9,000-piece one, and then that just kind of got me started. And I've done a few other big ones. I've done 18,000, a 24, a 33, a 40,000, this one, and now I just finished even a bigger one.
52,000.
So.
What is the longest time that you've spent on? Because I'm fascinated by this.
I can go for a couple hours at a time. Like, I see what's on TV, and so I'm doing two things at once, and then I have to take a break, and I don't get frustrated if I don't get hardly any in, and I have a system, so which works.
She works on it downstairs. We lock the door when she's down. She's got no backup, so she's put at least 10 pieces in, and she come back.
I just kind of do it for a while, then take a break, then go back to it. Some days more than others, but at the most, two, two and a half, three hours, and then I need a break.
Impressive. Impressive.
Just one more question for me. I'm wondering, is it inspiring our kids to kind of want to do puzzles, or I'm sure that some of them do already, but?
Yes, and actually, tonight, the Bauma family mentioned they have some puzzles at home that they're going to donate, along with the puzzles that we have already at recess available. But at recess, we have different options, and one of those right now is games or puzzles.
Oh, that's cool.
Students are enjoying puzzles more, and I think that they're more interested in them because they're seeing the large puzzle on the wall. And obviously, every time we walk by, we see, we talk about, you know, do you see something new that you didn't see before? And every time I walk past it, which is quite a few times every day, I always find something new to see in that puzzle. So they've really appreciated it, and the students are making connections with the different landmarks.
And when we went there, the students then all wrote notes to you.
Oh, nice.
It was just tremendous.
Right.
Really, really cool.
Nice.
And some neat pictures, and we'd have a great time when we went to the school and spent some time with the kids and toured around a little bit, and it was a lot of fun.
And they asked some questions, and some of them were not easy.
Yeah, sure. Anything else? Well, Jill, if you ever see a big U of M puzzle, Ms. Downs-Lewis has an empty wall that she wants decorated, so.
You two can get it.
No, thank you very much, though. That's wonderful. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next celebration, we have Mr. Larry Johnson and Mr. Alex Smart. They're going to talk about our U.S. Green Building Council for West Michigan Green School Champions. I'll invite them to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Robey, other distinguished board members. Thank you again for having us down. Myself, Alex, Richard Cheney, had the opportunity to attend the U.S. Green Champions Award a couple weeks ago downtown to accept this wonderful trophy for the district's dedication and commitment to green schools, sustainability. And although we have several of our schools that has been involved in the LEED program and sustainability, in particular, more recently, Southwest Community Campus, the work done there, Ottawa Hills and Union High School, was acknowledged for this particular award. The district has made a substantial commitment to ensuring that all of our buildings become LEED certified as we go through extensive renovations, and it's absolutely a step in the right direction, as the folks from the Champions, the Green Champions Committee, informed us. So it was an honor to represent the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and absolutely an honor that you folks here have led that champion by asking us to do what we do inside the buildings. Alex?
You pretty much covered it all. Thank you.
So any questions?
I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much for your leadership, Dr. Robey, for your leadership, and continue to push us in this direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Ross. Yeah, I don't know if you, I missed the last meeting, so I don't know if you were introduced at that time, but anyway, welcome aboard, Alex. It was, it's really great to see you there, so.
See you, Dr. Baker.
I mean, see you here. So it was great to see you there when you were there, but it's also great to see you here now that you're here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you haven't seen that puzzle in person, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it is.
Impressive. Thank you.
Thank you both. We'll move on to our report of scholarly representatives to the board. Ms. Cruz, call her on.
Good evening. We have our meeting this Wednesday, and there are a few schools planning for the close-up trip, so there, we did have a meeting with the representative today. So we do have our flight times, and we're just preparing for that now and hoping it goes well. A lot of people are looking forward to it, and so for this meeting coming up, we have a lot planned. Thank you.
How many students are traveling on that retreat, do you know?
I do know that from city, there will be 20 or 19, and then from CA Frost, there is 19 students. I'm not sure if any other schools are involved in that.
Forty?
Forty.
One forty.
One forty.
One forty, okay.
Wow.
I had to look at Mr. Lewis, some like my symbols, okay, one forty. One four oh.
Wow. All righty. Well, thank you very much. And public comment, I don't believe we have any public comment for board agenda items?
No.
We do not. So we'll move on to our reports, and start with our secretary's report.
We do not have a secretary's report for this evening.
Okay. Committee chair updates. Ad hoc facilities committee, Ms. Shaqy?
Yeah, we had a light agenda at our ad hoc facilities committee meeting, really focused on content for the board retreat, so had good discussion about what we want the entire board to hear, really framed around leading our facilities planning with our strategic plan. So probably a refresher on the strategic plan at the board retreat, along with the really comprehensive reports that we've received from Plant Moran, who has given some of those reports to us in the past, but with some updates on kind of the health and the breadth and the depth of the facilities that we have here in Grand Rapids Public Schools, not only our schools, but also our green spaces and administration building, et cetera. So we're just really working on gearing up for that board retreat on May 3, and you'll see those recommendations soon.
Great. Thank you. Legislative committee, Ms. Grant?
All right. Mr. Hemholt, would you mind giving? There are a few pieces of legislation that are being discussed, that we had a brief overview on today, nothing that we needed to take immediate action on, but Mr. Hemholt can turn.
Yeah, just, we'd had some good wind in the Senate, the critical shortage list, which is something we've been advocating for greater relief and to be able to bring back our retired veteran principals, teachers, to fill in during this talent crisis that we're in. And that legislation is moving in the Senate. We're optimistic that it should get passed and to the governor, hopefully before spring break. You know, it's still later in the year than we anticipated, and then we're continuing to monitor the legislation that would forgive any time where we're, that's treated like snow days. The good news is, we're not going to need it after all, so at least knock on wood that we don't get some surprise snow day here. We also talked a little bit about how the budget process is, the House and Senate, this is very common, where the governor comes out with her executive budget, and then a few weeks later, typically around spring break, usually it's just before spring break, they come out, the House and Senate come out with their respective budgets. It's now likely they're going to come out after spring break, which is great timing because your Capitol Day is April 12. So we're kind of hoping that we will have a glimpse of what those House and Senate budgets look like before we go. I also, we reported out on that Capitol Day, we do have a couple scholars coming, and so I know Jackie, you're at your Wednesday meeting, they're going to talk to see if there's any other scholars who want to come. Jackie has been getting all sorts of press, we need to get her signature, because between her and Luca, there's been Bridge Magazine and other reporters, and so you were so effective at our legislative lunch, we have to bring you along, but you're in high demand now, so I'm not sure we'll get you. But anyway, that was really the extent of it. There's some other legislation around dyslexia that we have not taken a position on yet. We had provided preliminary feedback. We've shared it with our special ed team, and so they're reviewing the amendments, and we'll determine whether or not we're going to take any action on it officially. Anything else you want to? I think I mostly covered it.
Yeah, I think that was good. So as far as Capitol Day, we will have a few members from the legislative committee joining us, but if anyone has real interest in attending, please let us know.
It's Tuesday, April 12. Yep.
It'll be all day, eight till four.
Don't make it sound so inviting.
Sorry. It's a fun-filled day at our state Capitol.
Okay.
And there's free lunch.
Good deal. Well, you might as well stay there, though. Because we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So Mr. Hemholt will be providing an update related to our foundation. Stephanie is?
She's traveling back from Florida, so she couldn't be here today.
And then also strategic planning, so if you want to summarize both.
So the GRPS Foundation, they've kind of been on pause for a week as Stephanie and Holly were down in Florida for Holly's, one of her children's wedding, I believe it is. So there's not a ton to report, other than they're continuing to plan for a mine share. You'll see, you should have already seen the save the date. This is the big, their big annual fundraiser that they're bringing back in person for the first time in two, more than two years. And so it's going to be an outdoor event. They're doing a taste of GRPS, so food from around the world will be represented, and it's going to be at GRPS University under the tent, so it's going to be outdoors, very different than what we've done before. And I think Stephanie Andrews, and I just want to make sure that she's got a new last name, she, or maybe an old last name, I should say, her father's last name, so she goes by Stephanie Andrews now, and she's, she has hired Holly Visser to be the Fund Development Director. Holly comes from Friends of GR Parks, who probably aren't too happy with us, as we told, just stole two of their top talent, but they are just.
We don't steal. We repurpose.
There you go. But they are just hitting the ground. Remember, they're still in the transition, so they're, you know, they're a small but mighty shop of three, and her next big step is to work on strategic planning to align with your, our strategic plan, and we just work hand in glove. So I couldn't be more excited about the momentum and the energy at the foundation. I think we shared before, they also dedicated $20,000 for teacher supplies, and that, more information to come on that. We have an exciting announcement coming out. And then they did $20,000 for moving expenses, as we're recruiting from Cuba, or excuse me, Puerto Rico, or from Ohio, the HBCU in Ohio. So they've really stepped up and are coming right alongside the district. Speaking of strategic plan, this is a very brief update. The Initiative Action Plan Teams, which there are 16 different teams, based on the kind of priority items we first identified for potential implementation in year one, those plans are due Friday. So after Friday, we will be reconvening the original strategy-themed team leaders. Those were the six strategic themes that were part of kind of like Phase 1 of this process. We're going to bring them back together, along with a small group, to go through and review all 16 of these initiative action plans, to then make any additional adjustments, recommendations, and how we might be able to narrow them down as well. 16 is a lot to try to implement in one year, and I think we were ambitious when we went through it and said, hey, we're already doing some of these things. So that process will then eventually lead to the update of a final document that we'll bring to this board, we're hoping by the end of April, but we also know that if we need to take time, we may have to go a little bit into May. I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Hemholt? All righty. Thank you, sir. So we have no action items tonight, so we only need a motion to, for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
All right. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. So that brings us to public comment for non-agenda items. So we do have two, Mr. Brett Graham and Ms. Maggie Zick. If you could, either one come forward and take turns, whoever wants to go first. Again, just a reminder, you have three minutes for your public comment. Board won't offer any official response. If there's any follow-up, we'll definitely follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I agonized all weekend about what to say tonight, where to even begin, and how to really be heard. I know you're probably all thinking, what more could I possibly have to talk about? Well, here we go. When we first started at GRPS almost eight years ago, I had high hopes, reasonable expectations, and a genuine sense of excitement. My kid was going to a dual immersion school, and she was going to be bilingual. What a gift. And the seven years we've been part of Southwest have been magic, 100% because of the amazing teachers. I do not regret my decision to send both of my kids to this wonderful school. While I have zero regrets, I am deeply disappointed when it comes to the district as a whole. While I may be up here speaking on behalf of my kid's school specifically, the issues are general and systematic. The lack of transparency is debilitating. The breakdown in communication, the disinterest in actually following through and making improvements to students' experiences, and even the disconnect to the schools you allegedly serve is maddening. Strategic theme number six says you want to create a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship, with objective number one being to ensure open, responsive, and transparent practices. How is this ever going to happen? If we can't get complete honest communication and participation from the district personnel in charge of things like our playground, how are we supposed to trust the academic and financial decisions being made? Yes, I'm going to bring up our playground. This project started with students designing a dream space without knowing the actual budgeted amount that would be allowed, because at that time, there was no money. You asked kids to design their playground without even having money to actually build it for them. They initially designed a space for ages 7 to 12, which was confusing, because where would the kinder and first graders play? Feedback was given regarding the ideas and age discrepancies, and new ideas were created to account for the actual age range we need, which is 5 to 12. Then we established a timeline this fall and didn't actually follow through. Where's the transparency or accountability? I still don't know who is actually in charge of this project, and I'm part of the Parents' Stakeholder Committee. And why were we budgeted such an inadequate amount of money for this playground? I was told that our school was given the most money towards the playground compared to the other schools, and apparently, I'm just supposed to be grateful for that, but I'm not. The playground that was pitched to us last week was designed for up to 50 kids. Our outdoor recesses have upwards of 200 kids at one time. Explain to me how that's going to work for our school. This tells me that there is a great disconnect between central office and the school's needs. I do want to thank Matthew Beresford. I was grateful to have the support of someone from central office who came and stayed through in the entire playground meeting with ideas, concerns, and who spoke up for the small group of students that he represents at our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
My name is Brett Graham. Dr. Robey, President Ross, esteemed board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've prepared a few remarks for this evening, and I've done my best to keep them factual, brief, and keep the passion minimized. This is intended to be a follow-up brief for you all. I know many of you appreciate updates and not just the problems. Unfortunately, this will be a little bit of both. As you know, I've been involved in this project since it began back in 2019, and I want to lead with a positive on this. I'm thrilled to share that an executive director found $75,000 for our pre-kindergarten playground. This was a need that was not included in the initial playground design, but this funding shows an investment at the grassroots level for our students and a step in the right direction for maintaining students in our school and in turn, maintaining teachers. I do not recall if I let you know that I had a meeting in January with many executive directors. I had asked for a meeting with them on January 7, and they were willing to meet. I was and am thankful for this opportunity. It was enlightening for all parties involved, considering the sensitive time schedule, excitement of the students, and the caliber of project. In this meeting, we discussed how to resurrect the playground project as it had gone dormant for a couple years. Dates were discussed and debated, then agreed upon, and issued as a target plan by an executive director. In the days and weeks following, both stakeholder team and the executive directors had obligations to meet. We then came to the point of waiting for the third-party design firm, CSMA, to take the students' vision and produce a biddable design while maintaining the students' vision. We finally had our big reveal, I believe it was March 15, and this was an incredibly empty and disheartening product. Not only did it seem the students' vision was lost, but the CSMA team never once visited a recess to see how many students were out at one time, or how the students utilized the playground. Our design options offered have capacity of 45 to 55 students, yet we have 150 to 200 at any given recess, and upwards of 600 at morning drop-off. On top of this issue, we now are hearing the suggestion of breaking ground during the fall 2022 semester, eliminating the playground for the students until it is completed. We have a tight budget to operate within, but we still need to maintain functionality and accommodations for the students. We are yet again left with a seemingly empty promise issued earlier this calendar year for a completed playground. In the grand spectrum of education, a playground may be perceived as a minor issue, but believe me, this is a huge deal to the students. The newly adopted strategic themes, I know they're not implemented yet, but they have a key point for this: collaboration, transparency, and trust. We are all on the same team, working toward the same goal, creating the students an upgraded playground. Currently, we have a proposed negative playground, which sounds to have support at the executive level. This project has had many highs and many lows. Unfortunately, this is another low. I'm still optimistic for this project, but I have a new perspective and reserve. I would welcome you all to follow our progress a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, I don't have any announcements. Thank you. Superintendent comments?
Actually, I don't have any this evening.
All right. Ms. Cruz, call her on. Would you like to offer any closing comments tonight?
No, thank you.
Reverend Mathias?
Just, again, really appreciate the public comments and bringing it again to the attention not only of the board, but of the staff as well.
Ms. Lewis?
No comment.
All right.
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No comment, please.
Ms. Davis?
I'll just share that my kiddos go to Southwest, and on Friday, we had, I believe there were 65 students from Southwest that took a bus after school to the Delta Plex and performed the National Anthem for the Grand Rapids Gold, and it was quite an endeavor to get 65 kids on the bus and fed prior to going, and so just thank you to the staff involved in making that happen. to the staff involved in making that happen. And they did sing half of the National Anthem in English and half in Spanish, which was a surprise to everybody in the stands, so.
Thank you. Dr. Flores?
Just a note, I had the pleasure and honor of actually teaching over at Southwest Community Campus during my career.